Good morning, everyone. Welcome everybody in the audience to our June the eighth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Any items from the public? No items, okay. Motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Purchase order log. Any questions for Tracy? Everybody's good. Tracy, you're safe. All right, two internal budget revisions. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. I have two internal budget revision requests for the council's consideration, both submitted by the Honorable Tony Petrucci County Clerk, and both for Department four oh two, which is the county clerk's budget. The first request, Mr. Petrucci is requesting that he be allowed to reduce line two twelve printing by twelve dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is two hundred and fifty dollars with nothing spent to date. An increase line two eighteen postage by twelve dollars. That account currently has a deficit balance of eleven dollars fifty-four cents. The second request for Mr. Petrucci is to once again reduce printing, line two twelve, which now has five hundred and fifty-nine dollars, which now would have an unencumbered fund balance of two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. An increase line three fourteen supplies materials by one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. And Mr. Petrucci has indicated this is to cover expenses for the rest of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
We have change in status. New hire recommendation received from Randy Lilly for emergency manage- our emergency management director for Amy Springer as a threat assessment manager with an annual salary of fifty-five thousand effective July the fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Katie DeLaGuetti, prosecuting attorney for Jarek Allen as a summer intern with the hourly rate of twenty dollars an hour effective June the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. And we have a new hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, community corrections director for Anthony Gonzalez as a part-time driver with an hourly rate of seventeen dollars and eighty-two cents effective June thirteenth. Change in status received from Tim Zaya, community corrections director for Lori Proudfoot. She is going from a Joe Tip peer recovery coach to a Joe Tip project coordinator with a salary increase from forty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-five to fifty thousand six seventy-six effective June the first. And we have a resignation of the county surveyor.
Anthony, do you want to discuss that just briefly?
Sure. The county surveyor is probably aware is a constitutional office is still on the ballot and it doesn't carry with it really any responsibilities and salary. It's largely unfilled about. We did have an elected surveyor, Alex Shipler, and after the series of emails, I was able to talk to him. He's going to work for Washington County, Maryland. He just wanted to make sure it's fair. His name wasn't on anything here in case it's perceived as some conflict and working for Washington County. There's nothing to, I mean, you could appoint somebody. I doubt you're getting a lot of people coming forward who want to be appointed, but there's no further action.
And we've never used the county surveyor?
No, you can. There is statutes. You can use the county surveyor for survey needs more. You can at an agreed upon rate, or you can use any licensed surveyor.
So there's no requirement that we have the county surveyor?
There's no requirement that we have a county surveyor. It's still in the constitution as a constitutional office. I believe that they were used early on. We're still trying to figure out.
We're talking eons ago.
In the last hundred years. It's not really been official.
Well, we still have those issues every now and then.
Well, we do. But prior to Mr. Shipper, we had had a county surveyor for.
Oh, I know. It used to be Greg Ebernatsky, and then it was David Myers, and then it went back to Greg, and so. Yeah. Those are the ones I remember.
So was he just paid when he did something?
If he was contracted.
He used to contract, but also contract with any other.
Did we ever even use him?
Uh, no.
We've had surveying work done, but we've never used him.
I think I remember contact or one commission contacted the surveyor, but it wasn't, he wasn't qualified to do what was needed to be done, so.
Yes. And sometimes he'll become elected surveyor, even if they're probably not qualified to be elected surveyor. Nobody really challenged.
Challenge.
They did try to do some survey work, and they don't have the stamp.
Stamp to do.
So.
So we have a vacancy, and if anybody out there in Berkeley County would like to be our appointed surveyor, come on up and we'll.
The intent of this was just to make the council work, get his resignation, and really no action is needed.
Right.
Didn't want to make people worry about it.
I'm just announcing it out there as a public service PSA, so.
That's just the kind of guy you are.
Yeah.
Public service lawyer.
You think? Jim, you make me wonder. All righty, approval. Thank you, Anthony. Approval of the minutes. Everybody was here from May the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Council calendars. Let's go here. Right along here this morning. All right, here today on the eighth. Come back here to board and commission calendars. Fireboard this evening at six thirty P M. I will not be able to attend that for previous commitment. On the twelfth, Monday, at twelve noon, Region nine, at two thirty, L E P C. Six P M, Farmland Protection. This will be the first meeting for the new program director, Reese. And then six P M Airport Authority. I won't be there for that one either. The thirteenth, nothing scheduled. On the fourteenth at nine thirty, Development Authority, and at six thirty P M Roundhouse Authority, nothing. Fifteenth to the sixteenth. Everybody okay there?
The health board will be moved from the nineteenth because it's a holiday, and they'll have it on the twelfth, but it's a Zoom meeting.
Well, we're going to be closed on the nineteenth and twentieth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. President, if I may, on July twenty-seventh, I know it's, you know, several weeks away. That is the ribbon cutting for C M C. And I know Council President Whitaker has been asked to give some remarks, and Council Vice President Boken Arrow worked on that project that he had indicated a desire to, to be there. I think Councilperson Catholic Steve Giral vacation last week.
Yes.
We had some informal discussions. Was wondering if the council, we could put that, the ribbon cutting, as we have in the past with some other ribbon cuttings, we could actually put that on your agenda as part of your, your normal business. That way everyone could attend if you want. What I would recommend is that maybe you move the meeting from nine thirty A M to eight thirty A M. Do the consent agenda and purchase order log and keep business as late as possible, and then everyone can go to the ribbon cutting if that's agreeable.
That is agreeable by me. I would, I think it'd be beneficial for all of us to try to be there.
I think that would be, that would be good.
What is it, ten thirty?
The ribbon cutting is at ten thirty.
It's on the twenty-seventh.
So we will, we'll amend your agenda, and the reason I'm asking now is because many, many times we'll get requests well in advance for agenda times. So you can start your meeting at eight thirty A M on Thursday, the twenty-seventh. Take care of any business that you might have for about an hour, and then give them plenty of time to get to the, to the ribbon cutting.
We can reconvene then if we have to.
Yes, sir.
All righty, make that so.
You got that trace? Okay, Ken, be good. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All righty, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed. Motion carries. Mr. Hatz, you're next up. Two personal property tax exonerations for taxpayer error.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
I do have a couple here today. That's the first one. We do have two of those. They both did not write off their, their returns. We didn't lock them out, so. Taxpayer error. So we got those two, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the tax exoneration for taxpayer error.
Mr. President, I'm moving to accept the two.
Exonerations.
Exonerations. Personal property and with a sum of three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents.
I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Motion denied, I'm sorry.
Good, thank you. We do have the personal property exonerations, six of them for we have to get directed. Do you approve more? And as listed in the reasons, they total up to seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-three cents.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the officer tax exonerations for seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-three cents?
Yes, sir. Make motion. We accept the exonerations as presented by the assessor for the personal property officer error in amount of seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-three cents.
Have a motion to have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. We have another one here?
I have one more. It's a real estate exoneration. We had wrong tax class. We had to correct that. So it's for one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-nine cents.
Motion to approve the real estate tax exoneration due to officer error.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, make motion to accept the exoneration as presented by the assessor for the real estate officer error, one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-nine cents.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
I have one other thing I want to mention. Did you get those sheets, those sheets to be signed? We got, books have to be over to the ship.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you, sir. All righty, board of meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
I didn't have any normal board meetings, but I did have a breakfast meeting the other day with Darryl Coles and gentleman's name is David Stuck with Pyramid Healthcare. They recently acquired the Camp Tomahawk and had just been putting a nice facility out there, putting a lot of money into it. I think it's going to be very helpful for Berkeley County. He is planning to take, take us out there and give us a tour here soon and start construction in the near future. I gave him the number of Tim over there at the David Port Center, so I think they could work well together. It's a pretty good, pretty good meeting. It sounded like they have a good system there. They, they have multiple places all over the U S. This is a twenty, like a twenty-six day facility. And then they have an outpatient program on return. So I think this is something very positive to add and maybe possibly work together with the programs we already have here in Berkeley County.
Okay. Anything else?
The company is called Pyramid Healthcare.
All right, Mr. Bernhardt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, I had a local government advisory committee meeting Thursday by Zoom. It was interesting, but nothing pertaining to us, as usual. And then I had a water board.
And then I had a water board meeting on Monday. They approved the design plans for A P M residences, which is right there at exit sixteen. There's a, going to put apartments there by the Best Western, five story apartments. And then Village is a courthouse square, which is a hundred and seventy five townhomes. Okay. Uh, they selected the auditor, Decker and Company. And. They added sixty seven meters in main for a fiscal year total of one thousand and sixty four. And. Oh, Emery and Garnet Garrett are scheduled to be in town June sixth and seventh to stake out well sites for drilling the week of June twelfth. Which includes drilling the well in the Kennedy Project.
Parks and. Went inward?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was my meetings.
That's it? Mr. Gatlin.
My sewer and stormwater meeting was canceled this week, so I have no other meetings to report.
Okay. Mr. Boken Arrow?
Uh, yes, sir, planning commission on Monday night. Had eight public hearings, had a rather busy evening. Two projects in particular of, of kind of interest was the warehouse construction on Hammonds Mill Road. About a nine hundred and fifteen thousand square feet warehouse. And then the other one was a seventy two unit apartment complex in Berkeley Station area. Also, I had executive board meeting with the Development Authority, basically to. Review the executive director's performance over the last year. Yeah, she's doing very well, and she's getting stronger every day, very well.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir, I see.
Okay. I didn't have any meetings myself. Do we have a Board and Commission vacancies, anybody appropriate that would make a motion?
Uh, yes, sir, I reappoint Charles Hensel to the Park Board.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries, thank you. Um, let's see, we have a new application received from Mr. Bennett for the Farmland Protection Board, do we want to bring him in? Put him on the agenda here coming up for interview? Alright, we're running a little, oh, there she is, there's Tracy. Running a little bit ahead of time, if you want to come on up, we'll proceed. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, for Ronnie Good, yes.
Oh, good old Ronnie Good.
Sorry about that. Tracy, good morning.
Good morning. This grant is for award acceptance. It is the West Virginia Community Corrections Grant Program, fiscal year twenty four. From West Virginia Justice and Community Services for the Day Report Center, the Community Corrections. It is a twelve month grant, beginning July first, twenty twenty three, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. The award amount was two hundred and forty four thousand, with a match of a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and seventy one dollars. It's the six year receiving funding for the Day Report Center. Community Corrections Program to provide confinement, reentry services, and alternative sentencing for eligible offenders in Berkeley County, West Virginia. This grant funding will pay for the following, it offsets the budget of the Community Corrections' current employee salaries. The director, office administrator. Two case managers, one full time driver, drug screening supplies, and offender monitoring contractual services. And partial salary in French of two confinement officers reviewed as. And there is a resolution for acceptance.
Alright. Can I have a motion to adopt the resolution, is that right, or approve it? Oh, I'm sorry, motion to accept the grant.
Sure, move.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. And a motion to adopt the resolution.
Yes, Mr. President, a motion to adopt the resolution in support of the acceptance of the administration of the Fiscal Year Twenty Four West Virginia Community Corrections Grant Program.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Alrighty, we're running real good here. I have a. Commission interviewee with Jody Price, and she's not here yet. So, let's just take a little break, or not, unless we have anything for Alan.
No, sir.
Alrighty, well, we'll just take a break.
Okay, we're back in session and next on the agenda is Ms. Jody Williams Price to interview for the Museum Commission. So come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself and what we don't know from your application.
Good morning. This is Jody Williams Price. Wow, and I'm here to interview for number seven on the newly formed commission, is my understanding.
Yes.
First, I want to apologize for being a bit late. I wrote the brief on February 1st, so I'm still here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wasn't exactly sure how to prepare for this because it is something very new as it was described to me. But I've been on the board for the kids by George Museum since 2010. My son was involved with it as well. He's now an adult and has moved on. But I love museums. I love history and there's room for all history. I noticed here in Berkeley County, I moved here in 2002. And I took a walking tour with my son when he was in scouting and we did geocaching. And I learned a lot about what's here in Berkeley County that most residents don't even know about. As a teacher with Berkeley County schools, I did substitute teaching as well as now I'm a counselor. Counselors operate in a different area and we deal with the whole child, not just what we have to teach them. So I often tell them, "Go outside. Look around your community. See what's there. You'll be surprised what is there that you're already seeing in your history." So it's about making history come alive to people and being on the commission and learning what else is here in Berkeley County. The Panhandle and other places in the state. It's a beautiful state. It's a hidden gem in the mid-Atlantic region. It needs to be showcased. Berkeley County is a great place to live, a great place to raise families, a great place to be. So that's a little bit about me that I was able to impart since you asked because again, I wasn't exactly sure how to prepare for this. But questions are easier for me to answer.
Well, this is a very informal group of guys up here right now, so...
So I can exhale?
Yes, you sure can. Please, please, please don't do that.
Okay, because I was rushing in here and I went around the building to the wrong place and they direct me back over here.
No, you're fine. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come in for us and that's good. I like to pull that down out of the way because now I can see you.
Okay. You can see me? Yeah, it's like I'm standing in a hole. But no, I'm not.
Well, we're here. Counselperson Boyd, we're going to start with him and if he has any questions he would like to ask you then, and like you said, you can answer the questions any way you see fit, so.
I don't know if I have any questions really. So you've lived here since 2002?
Yes. Moved here from the DC metro area, actually Washington DC city limits. Born and raised in Philadelphia. I went to college in DC right at high school.
You like history, geocaching things? Do you like that?
I love history. It's an amazing story. And it's a continuum of stories. So I love history. The museums are great, especially in the summertime. You go inside and then outside.
You spend a lot of time in museums in DC when you live there?
Oh yeah, that was my recreation. It was free. And when people would come and visit, I'm like, "Hey, let me show you why I'm in Washington DC." I knew DC better than I knew Philadelphia. So now as an adult, I go back and visit and rediscover my city of Philadelphia a lot too.
Mr. Barhart?
I was born across the river from Philadelphia.
Really? Where?
With Mary New Jersey.
Oh wow, yep, just across the river. Yeah, Delaware River.
But I've been here since 1955. But I've been here since 1955.
Okay, I can't.
Yeah, well, I tell people that. They just look at me like, really? That's, that's another era. When you say you enjoy history and I guess the history of Berkeley County, the history of Berkeley, Morgan and Jefferson Counties. Any period of history that you're thrilled about?
Like I said, history is a continuum. What I learned moving here is that you didn't know much. I learned, let me see, fifth grade, I always tell people, I live in West Virginia. They're like, oh, Western Virginia. The great geography is West Virginia. And there's a lot encompassed in West Virginia. When I first moved here, I did America War. I did volunteer work. And after that, for two years, I worked for the Girl Scout Council that was here at the time. Met a lot of local people here in Berkeley County, Morgan County. And my territory extended down to Page County because I was a recruiter. And I learned about the Washington Trail, which wasn't quite spelled out in the history books. But it was nice to hear from a local person how all of that is intertwined in history going back to early 1700s. The architecture of some of the older buildings. There's one on Boyd Avenue, I think. And it is amazing because it's a stone building, unlike, pretty much like some of the ones that may have been in Jersey or up in the Philadelphia area or Delaware. Where the architecture showed you what was important of that time when it came to building. You have walls about this thick because they wanted to avoid cannon fire. But again, being out and about in the community puts a lot of the book history into context. And that's what I learned about being in Berkeley County, Morgan and Jefferson County, that the history here extends to the early 1700s, probably further.
Actually, you could take the history of Berkeley, Morgan and Jefferson County back around 600 million years ago.
Geologically?
Geologically. And, well, there's a lot to say about the history of Berkeley County from that period, you know, because with the fossils and the rocks.
Yeah.
And that sort of stuff. And, but that's part of the history of Berkeley County is the, the ground you're standing on, starting there. And building up through, you know, modern, up to modern times.
It's interesting. You mentioned the geological aspect of Berkeley, Morgan and Jefferson Counties. My son, the one I used to do geocaching with, he, he's an Eagle Scout, so is my oldest son. And they're both engineers in their own right. My oldest son, he lives in North Carolina. But he is a civil engineer because he liked, number one, being outdoors. Number two, just the geological aspect of civil engineering. My other son is an actual geologist. Both of them graduated from WVU. And he talks about the geology a lot. As a kid, learning of geology, I understood it, but I'm like, it's a rock. You pick it up, you toss it in the water and watch the rivers. No, there's more to it than that, the geological formations. The first time I ever went down to New River Gorge, my late husband took me down when we first met. I was a city girl going down the country. And it was great because at that time, I worked at an environmental law firm in Washington DC as a parent. So I understood a lot about the natural order of things and what the environment was like and how often we damaged it. And going down to New River Gorge taught me a lot about the ancient plants, the geology. And how it does make a difference, but we have to protect it. But the number one thing I did learn is that nature will reclaim itself, no matter what we do to it. But to see it here in West Virginia and in Berkeley, Morgan and Jefferson Counties, it's amazing. It's right here at.
Mr. Cattell?
Your son did his Eagle project.
Yes, he did, Mr. Cattell. And he still talks about you. Donovan Price, yeah.
He was a really nice young man.
Thank you.
We were glad to help him earn that, so.
Yeah, it is still stunning.
And I was going to ask you if you geocached at the Fort House Farm.
We did do some geocaching out.
There's two there at this point, so.
Okay, there is. Okay, great.
I'll tell you where they have it. I haven't ruined it.
Okay.
I'm teasing.
I was like, oh, wow, I'll get to go on a field trip.
You got to find that for yourself.
Okay.
But I remember your son very well and I remember that. And it's been a while, but a very nice young man. I'm glad to hear he's doing well.
Yeah, he is doing very well.
Most kids that earn their Eagle badge seem to do well in life, so.
Yeah, they do. It's interesting because you can kind of tell an Eagle Scout from a distance. I always refer to it as a quiet confidence. And, and they just move through time and space with a quiet confidence that you wouldn't normally see because they learned that so early on. It was daunting for him to do that project because he's like, Mama, I have to tell grown people what to do. I mean, like, yeah, because you got to get your project done. So you are the project manager, but I guarantee, promise you, this will carry you. And he did, and he's doing well. And the other son that I mentioned, the geologist, he's right now in the middle of the Pacific Ocean. His name's Daniel Price. Someone sent me a text last night that he was featured in the journal yesterday. I didn't know. But he's in the middle of the Pacific on a research vessel. Yeah, exploring the depths of the ocean.
There's a, there's a lot of stuff under that ocean that we'd like to get our hands on.
Yeah, that too.
Chinese, if we can beat them to it. China's after it too.
Oh, yeah.
All kinds of precious metals and stuff.
Especially for the technology.
So what do you think of Berkeley County over the last 20 years you've been here?
It has changed a lot, but it has changed for the better. It would be nice to get a handle on the growth in that we're smart with it. Working with Berkeley County Schools, I understand that for every family that comes, there are going to be at least two children. So even Berkeley County Schools has to expand to accommodate that. The growth with the housing. I miss the apple orchards. I miss the farms. But if we can be smart with the growth and the infrastructure that goes along with that, we can survive. There's enough space, but every inch of the space does not add up.
We're trying to preserve as much as we can through farm land protection and that's a help too.
Oh, good.
I think it's over 8,000 acres now that are preserved. There's a lot more than.
Yeah.
But it's good to see you again.
Well, same here.
We appreciate your interest in wanting to serve. I'm sure we'll give you serious consideration when we form this committee. Thank you.
Mr. Coconut?
Mr. Coconut, I think that comes from you that I see as such a positive attitude. Thank you. It's, it's refreshing. It's enjoying. Thank you.
You're welcome to thank you. That's me.
That's a big gift, yeah. Well, you present yourself very well and very positive. I like that a lot. I, I scrolled through some of your history there. I see where 20 years is a paralegal.
Yeah.
I think that that skill set might be very well used in setting up the framework for this commission. And this is, this is ground entry level, you know? To be able to build this and start this and get it started correctly. It was very important to us to, as a, as a regional museum, it's important for us to be able to display all of our history. And have a, hopefully have a rotation of a lot of documents and, you know, items that will be lent to the museum. So it was, you know, you on a, being in DC, having experience and exposure there to world-class museums.
Yeah, the Smithsonian. I remember the Smithsonian. Because I go back on.
So just that, that vision that, that you can bring to the table. How, are you still involved with the Kids by George Museum?
Yeah, I'm still one of the four.
Okay, and how, I don't know, or I hear a whole lot about that visit. How is that? Is it?
It's still in, in good shape. We're still, we're looking for a director right now. That's why it hasn't been open like it was before the pandemic. Because with anything and everything else, the pandemic really hit hard. Last summer, we spent sanitizing the whole museum. And I worked as the interim director for that last summer to get that up and running so we can get back online openings. There's still very much interest in the museum. I was speaking with someone yesterday who wants a daycare. And she said, you know, we hadn't heard much about the museum, but before the pandemic, they used to take their students there. So there was a lot of foot traffic before the pandemic, but we're trying to open back up and just get that back going again. It won't be like it was right before the pandemic, but we're getting it back online. But everything's still there.
Good. All right.
We're ready. We just need to go.
And thank you for your interest and helping make us better. Thank you.
I just have a couple of thoughts that, you know, with the board, do you see that the board interacting like, when somebody goes in and looks at history and there's nobody there to kind of tell you the story behind the story? Do you, can you envision like maybe volunteers being in there telling the story if they so choose to? You know, getting back into it that way instead of just going through and reading everything? Because I find that whenever I've been to different places where history has been made, there's always a good storyteller there that will tell you, you know, why they're here and doing things like that. So in my mind, that's kind of how I'd like to see part of the museum. It doesn't all have to be that way, but I'd like to think that that's an option.
Yeah.
And, and then one other thing, you said you're part of the Shenandoah Council for the Girl Scouts around here or the area?
Girl Scouts. It used to be Shawnee Council, but now it's National Cavalry. There was a merger. And then with the Boy Scouts and the Eagle Scouts, I was part of the Shenandoah Area Boy Scally. It's still there. They're not going anywhere. That's another opportunity for volunteerism. But you asked about having people in the museums kind of telling the stories. There's a way to do that. When I was a counselor at Martinsburg High School back in, I left there in 2012 and went to elementary. Kids were required to do volunteer work. I don't know what that requirement is anymore. But there's an area right there where you can have students come in, do the tours and get their volunteer hours. It's a way to that. The museum will get what it needs. The students will get what they need, what they need to graduate, but they'll also get something extra. They'll learn something that they didn't know before. Not only will they learn something they didn't know before, they will develop themselves. For example, again, back to my son who's a geologist, after he graduated from WVU that summer, he did a stint through America War and the National Guards. He was a shy kid. I drove him out to Bryce Canyon. That was his station. And dropped him off. And he had to figure it out. And what he learned about himself, which was heartwarming to hear it as a parent, but I'm like, wow, this is our future. He was able to develop himself and not be so shy and communicate with people coming around. And that's something that students would be able to take away if they were volunteering in DC. They can develop themselves.
And just a little bit of history that I have is, do you remember, she was the oldest Girl Scout and she was living in our community. Her name was Florida Fritz. Do you remember Florida?
No.
Yeah, she's passed away since then, but she was like in her 90s. She was one of the oldest Girl Scouts. And she was honored a couple of times at a couple of events that I went to, so.
Really? And what's her name again?
Her name was Florida Fritz.
Florida Fritz, here in Berkeley County.
She lived in Berkeley County in my community up at, in Inwood, yeah.
In Inwood, okay.
Yeah, but she's since then passed on. Wonderful lady. But that's all I have. But thank you for coming in. I don't, anybody else have anything else? No? Okay, well, see.
Thank you. Good to see you, Mr. Cattell. I finally got a chance to read the names. I was rushing to get here, but thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Great talking with you today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Watch that, dodge that traffic on 81.
Oh, I'm going to take a little ladder.
You're safer, yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes. Sometimes, yeah.
All right, have a good day.
All right, thank you. Give your son regards, please.
I definitely will. I can't wait to tell him. I'll text him as soon as I get out of there.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cattell.
Next in, Mary? Is it, come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself. You're a candidate for the seniors, senior board?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Mary Kathleen Terry. I'm a new resident to Berkeley County. I came from Southern Virginia, Palasque, Virginia. I am a, an associate broker with Central 21 Brighter Cruelty. And since the legislature just passed reciprocity, I'll be getting my broker's license in West Virginia. But I did take all the courses and, so that's added great knowledge. I worked in real estate for a number of years. Before that, I worked with their county government. And I am a senior. And when I arrived here in Berkeley County, I wasn't walking well and I didn't have full use of this side. And I decided to go to the Senior Center because I'm old enough for it. And I think it was just, it's, it's a wonderful place. Especially me recovering from some injuries and stuff. I couldn't work full-time. But now I'm standing, walking. I don't have a cane anymore. So, but I still want to be involved with the Senior Center because I fell in love with the seniors. At one point in time, I owned a senior care business. So I'm very familiar with working with seniors.
Mr. Boyd, we were going to ask questions if we have any and, and we'll just start with Mr. Boyd down there if he has anything to ask you.
I really don't. You seem, you said you have a senior care center and you like working with seniors. I think you're a good candidate.
Mr. Barnhart?
Well, most of us up here are seniors also.
That, that's, that's the way it is. I mean, it sneaks up on us and all of a sudden you're over 60 and you're like, what? I was young.
Well, you said you, you attended the Senior Center and you observed seniors enjoying the facility.
And I enjoy.
Anything that you wanted, that from your experience, that you would want to take to being a member of the Senior Services?
Well, most of their activities for the people that ride the buses end about 12 o'clock. And as those of you know, when we get to be this age, things hurt in the middle of the night and we don't get as much sleep as we got when we were in our 40s. Excuse me, I know you're all in your 40s. So there are some activities in the afternoon, but they're not available to the seniors that have to use the transportation. And I know it's a cost thing and I know it's a convenience thing for the schedule and everything. But that's one thing I would like to see, some of those activities in the afternoon, transportation after that. Say 2 o'clock or 3 o'clock. That would, you know, that, that's a hope of mine. I don't know the details on that and I'll learn the details.
Thank you.
Mr. Cattell?
I was at the senior meeting. You attended, you, not this past one, but the one before, so. Whenever, I didn't really get to meet you, but I recognized you from that meeting, so. But we appreciate your interest and we'll give it consideration, I'm sure. So thank you for wanting service.
Do you have vacancies on the scene?
I think there is at this time.
Mr. Coconut? Is there a particular skill set that you feel you could bring to that board? I mean, I know you, you've had some experience according to what you said. But what particular skill set?
My skill set is I'm a real estate broker. So my skill set is in buying and selling and marketing real estate. I do have like 47 years ago, a degree from University of Tennessee in logistics and I worked on that for a while. Skill set? Skill set, I'm not a certified accountant, although I've had a number of accounting courses, so I understand the statements on, on the committee. Skill set, being able to talk on my feet, knowing, getting to know people in the area because I am a senior, and I have a lot of friends and colleagues and relatives that are in the same page. So I don't have, I can't say I'm a lawyer, I can't say I'm an attorney, I can't say that because I'm not. I'm just me.
Good enough. Well, you know, a lot of us are just me's, and we'll make it work, that's what we do. So thank you. Say you're from Pulaski, Virginia?
I lived in Pulaski, Virginia. That is the town that my husband was from.
Okay. I know gentlemen, I know a couple of people down there, Jason Buckland, he has, I think he's an attorney down there from years ago, and, but anyway, that was just a name I threw out there for you. I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for coming in and, you know, your, your willingness to volunteer and, and to give back to the community. That's kind of how we all got started up here, and, and we saw that we could try to make a difference, and, and that's what we try to do, to leave it better than what we found it. So I really appreciate you coming in, and we'll, we don't make a decision today. What we do is if everything kind of goes through, if there's any more interviews, we'll do that, and then we'll, we'll be in touch. So, all right.
Thank you all very much. I thought I would be totally intimidated, but I'm smiling and happy.
Oh, good.
I've never appeared before a board before.
I want to clarify our sleep pattern. Mr. Boyd DeYoung, he gets less sleep than we do for other reasons.
Probably.
For other reasons. He's busy, he's a whole lot busier than what we are.
Got you.
You want to explain that?
I was gonna say, you know, I don't have any trouble falling asleep. I just have trouble staying asleep.
Yes. Yes.
You know, it's, you know, it's gonna be a bad day when your arms go to sleep faster than what you do.
Yes. And I think my experience working with those with dementia, Alzheimer's, and psychiatric issues, I think I would be even better.
That does take a special, special person.
So I had six people die only in one year, and I had to stop. So that's been years ago, but I love it, and I'm getting there myself. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And have a great day.
I will.
Be careful out there with that heat index, that's for sure.
Yes. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right. Well, we got ten minutes before the phone call, is that right?
Yes.
All right. We'll just take a break here for ten minutes.
Hi, Philip. Jim Whitaker with the Berkeley County Commission or Council here.
Hi.
Soon to be commission, I guess.
(laughing).
But you're on speakerphone here. I'm going to bring us back in session and we're just going to do, start your interview here for the, for the Fire Board. So we're, we're back in session now and we're gonna let you introduce yourself and kind of tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve. Is that's okay?
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Yes, as I said before, my name's Philip Barra. I'm a 26-year-old citizen here in Berkeley County. I'm also a volunteer fireman at Station 50 and Station 60. I currently work part-time for Berkeley Fire. As an individual in the community at a young age, I do my best to give back and serve in different ways that I can. And I believe that being able to serve on the Fire Board would be a great way to help me grow as a young citizen, as well as to give back in another way.
Alrighty. Mr. Boyd's gonna start off if he has some questions for you. We're gonna start down there. HD, you have any questions for Philip? Okay. Mr. Barnhart?
Well, like HD, I really don't have any questions. I'm just thanking for his service and continued service to Berkeley County.
No, are you?
Absolutely. Thank you.
We got Commissioner Catlett. He's down a little bit further, so we'll ask him to speak up, make sure you can hear him.
Where do you live, Philip? Down in the south end?
I live over in Back Creek Valley.
Back Creek Valley, right, okay.
Yes.
And we do appreciate your interest in wanting to serve and it sounds like you would be very well qualified for this position. So, thank you.
Thank you much.
Okay. Mr. Coconut?
Hey, Philip. How you doing?
Good, Chief. Commissioner, how are you?
Good, good. Philip, have you taken on any kind of a leadership role since you've been with Back Creek or with Baker Heights?
Yes, sir. So this year I was appointed Lieutenant 5-1 from Chief de Haven. And I'm also on the board at Back Creek.
You're on their Board of Directors?
Yes.
Well, good, good. The other, the other question I have, with the Fire Board, if, if they are financially secure with, with their finances, would you support being able to use those dollars to pay for career firefighters?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. That's all I've got, Philip. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alrighty. Philip, this is Jim. I don't have any, any specific questions. I am the sitting councilperson or commissioner for the Fire Board. Like Eddie, I said, you know, my, my first concern is to making sure that we do have public safety for most in our minds and, and what the county's gone to moving forward is, is gonna have to be pretty soon some paid services the best we can. So I was glad to hear that you would support that initiative if, if we were able to go down that path. Again, you know, your willingness to, to want to serve and give back to your community is well commended. And like I said on one of the other interviews we had today, it's, it's how we all kind of get started and, and the paths and the careers that we do is giving back and serving others. So other than that, I don't have any questions either. I know, make it short and sweet for you, so I hope it didn't take up too much of your time, so.
Oh, your time. And thank you guys for accommodating for me to be able to do such.
Sure. We try to accommodate the best we can.
I appreciate that. Thank you guys so much.
Alrighty. Have a great afternoon.
See you, Philip.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
That it? Are y'all? Goodbye. Okay. We have one more interview. Mr. McAvoy.
(inaudible).
Alright, we'll take another 10-minute break, Penny.
My voice is good.
We're gonna wear that button out over there.
There were a couple of names when it's, when, after all that went down with the Tuscaloosa zoning stuff and the board is only filled, there were a couple of names I didn't recognize. So I'm not sure who actually is on the board is only appeals this time.
They are appointed by us, I see. But I've known Scott for a long time, been a real close friend. Uh, I can't think of anybody better out there to serve than him. And I know, and knowing him personally, he'll do what's right, and that's what's important. And, uh, I think that area should be protected. And I, and I know he'll do what's right and serve our community well, so I would support him 100%.
Okay. Mr. Coconut.
Scott, when you came before us, uh, when that zoning, uh, issue or the construction of that development, you presented yourself very professionally. Uh, I, it's obvious that you were well respected by your neighbors and they supported, uh, you as you made your presentation. And, uh, like Steve, um, I've, I've never heard anything bad about you, you know? Even when this item was being looked at, you not only looked at it from the, uh, written document, but you also looked at it from a common sense point of view as well. And I think that helps a lot of people, uh, because everything cannot be documented for every particular situation. But, um, I, I'm like Steve, I feel that you'd be a, a great asset on that board, um, and be able to represent the people in that neighborhood very well. Thank you.
I think, you know, I've grown up in Berkeley County before eighty-one was built. We used to ride horses and work legs where eighty-one is now. The mall, we used to go rabbit hunting where the mall was, you know, as soon as we got out of high school, we'd go over and hunt rabbits. Um, I do care deeply for my county. That's where I grew up.
Yeah.
You know, and I, I do want, I don't like to see things, um, excuse me, I don't like to see things bastardized when you have, um, areas that have been built very nicely and, and laid out with, with great precision. And then thirty years or forty years later have, you know, a, a younger person's opinion is going to be different mine, and mine probably, when I was coming, is different from what it is in, in my sixties. But, um, I think you just need to use common sense growth and, and the biggest thing that we've struggled with in Berkeley County and, and other areas is the infrastructure. And we constantly want to consume these, these tax dollars or all this additional money in doing these, these big projects, but the roadways can't handle it, you know? Um, I do a lot of work down in Baltimore and DC area. It's, it's ridiculous.
It is, and that's, you know, the roadways are the one things we don't have the control over because they're the state.
Correct.
And we went to a meeting down in Jefferson County here a couple of weeks ago and, and it was, uh, like Steve said, I mean, they, we had their ear listening to us.
Right.
And so we'll see how far that they'll listen for us, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, um...
It's bittersweet.
It, it is, it's, it's, you want, because you, you do with, with these tax dollars and, and like Hocken and Bramble and these big companies coming in, it's awesome because they support programs like the Boise World's Club and Parks and Rec. And we need that, we need that largely. But we also need to look at the individual areas where this new building, whatever it might be, whatever type of building it might be, is going in and what is it detrimental to that area? Or does it help that area? Does it, does it make that area better? And, and that was, my holdup on the, on the original plan in my area was, there was a certain section of it that was sort of left in limbo. And if the zoning disappeared, then it could have went in what my opinion would be a bad way, you know? Because then, because truthfully, you know, I, I don't want to condemn someone who has purchased a piece of property and decided that's what they want to, you know, they want to do this with it or whatever. And I also don't condemn, you know, the Stepto children for, for inheriting this really great piece of property in a very wealthy area that they really have no use for. And, and they don't, um, I bet they didn't love growing up there or playing in the woods and crick and all, but, you know, once their mom and dad had passed away, then it's, it's not the same view, it's not the same view. And, um, as I had mentioned before, you know, my father left me a couple hundred acres. Our family has several thousand acres. Um, we've all put in our wills, those that, that the name's on there, how we wanted sold or distributed later to not jeopardize other families that have owned farms and properties there for hundreds of years.
Correct.
You know, we don't want to mess up what they have.
That's what's in Catholic, I thought you had, um, Tom Bushman, Boy Rodriguez, Dan Shaggy, and Jeffrey Smith Jr.
That's five members.
Must be.
Currently four. Scott's gonna make a fifth. Scott, I don't have any other questions, but, but it's always good to see you, so come in and see us anytime you're in town if you want to, and we can always laugh and, and share a story or two, so.
Some good, some bad.
Yeah, some just all fun. I, I don't have a bad story to tell, they're all fun, so. Watch him talk today, okay?
Well, thank you gentlemen.
All right, thank you. All righty, uh, that concludes the, uh, I guess the public portion of our meeting. Uh, we're going to go into an executive session, no action.
Might as well ask now for, uh...
Public comment.
...from the public.
Yeah, that was going to be it. Uh, before we go into executive session, uh, no action to be taken, correct?
No, sir, just, uh, executive session for me.
Okay, is there any items from the public? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
One more.
We're in executive session.
Thanks ma'am. Three questions.[407.62]
Thank you, ma'am.